We're good? Okay, let's go ahead. Welcome to the Beaumont City Council meeting for October 5th, 2019. I am opening up closed session at 5:01 PM. Call to order please.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Councilmember Carroll?
Here.
Mayor Protim Santos?
Here.
Mayor Martinez?
Here. Do we have public comment?
No sir.
Alright, so Mr. City Attorney, can you read the items for discussion?
Yes, item two is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957b1.
Okay, we are returning from closed session. And Mr. City Attorney, can you report out, please?
Yes. The council met in closed session. Item two, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-7B1. Employee title, city manager. There was no reportable action taken on that item. And item three, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-7.6. Agency designated representatives, Ray Santos and Nancy Carroll. The unrepresented employee, the city manager. There was no reportable action on that item. Item number four, conference with real property negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.8 for property known as vacant land APN 418-190-004 through 007. The agency negotiator, the city manager, Todd Parton. Negotiating parties, city of Beaumont and MJC Investment Property 1 LLC under negotiation price and terms. There was no reportable action taken on that item. Item number five, conference with legal counsel. Anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.92 and/or three. One potential case, and there was no reportable action. And that's a report out from closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Peaton. We are now going into regular session at 6:16 PM. Have a call order, please.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Lara.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Mayor Bertem Santos.
Here.
Mayor Martinez.
Here. Do we have any actions on requests for dismissed absence? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Peaton, would you read us in our pledge? Put your hand over your heart. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Any conflict of interest disclosure? All right, so we have no announcements or recognition tonight. Before we head into public comments, I do want to send out, on behalf of the city, condolences to those who lost their lives in our recent fires and for the families and for those that lost homes and property and even pets on these devastating fires that happened recently. So, on behalf of the city council, I'd like to put that on record. All right, public comment?
No requests.
No requests, okay, so no public comments. We were going to consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are taken as one action item unless an item was pulled for further discussion. Do we have any requests to speak on consent calendar items?
No, sir.
Okay, any discussion by council? I'll entertain a motion if not.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar items one through five.
Hold a second. Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Lara.
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Mayor Bertem Santos.
Yes.
Mayor Martinez.
Yes. And with that, we will go to public hearings. The approval of all ordinances and resolutions are to be read by title only. Item number six, proposed amendments to the Beaumont Municipal Code, Chapter 17.12, adult entertainment, and Chapter 5.44, massage establishments, regulating the permitting and operation of massage establishments to comply with state law.
Thank you, Mayor, council. So before you, as the draft ordinance to amend 17.12 and 5.44 of the massage establishments, the bill before you that allowed us to make these revisions was passed in January 1st of 2015. Because when it took effect, staff proposed to bring this in 2016, but we didn't get it before you, probably through urgencies of some other matters. But before you is here to streamline our permitting of these businesses and to update our code to match the legislature's intent with the California Massage Therapy Council. I do sit as a member of the Board of Directors of that organization. And we're a little behind the ball in getting our ordinance up to speed again. Thought we had got that, but in essence, the California Massage Therapy Council would regulate the practitioners. The city would continue to permit the facilities and the operators. And we're going to give businesses that are currently operating a one-year grace period to continue to operate, but make the changes that are necessary to be compliant with this new code.
All right.
So, recommendation is that you hold a public hearing and approve the amendments to Beaumont Municipal Codes, Chapter 17.12, adult entertainment, and Chapter 5.44, massage establishments, regulating the permitting and operation of massage establishments to comply with state law. And with that, I'm available to answer questions.
Okay, thank you, chief. I will open the public hearing at 6:21 PM. Do we have public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, and we will see none, we'll close public hearing at 6:21 PM. Questions, discussion from council? Go ahead, Mr. White. I see all the different official changes in the text and everything, but in general, some of those businesses that are operating now that you're saying they have a year to get into compliance, are there some issues that you know of offhand that many of them are going to have to change to become compliant?
Currently, no life safety concerns. I think the concern, and we'd have to go back and look, is to make sure that their practitioners have their licensing through the CAMTC.
Okay.
Most of them do, because that's really the standard now throughout the state of California. And the reason for that is to, not only to help legitimize the industry, but to prevent and reduce human trafficking. So, as they have to attend a true, I should say legitimate business, so the schools are also regulated by the California Massage Therapy Council. So when they go to a school that's actually teaching the correct techniques in the industries that should be taught, and not a fly-by-night business that operates as a front, then they get that license through the CAMTC. Then we say you can only bring in those people. That prevents any people from, like you said, that are caught up in the human smuggling or the trafficking rings.
Do you know how many massage businesses we have now?
But I don't know that. Do you know the number? I don't know the exact number. Couldn't be more than, we have one that's about to come online, which could be our second or third.
Okay.
I just want to add a comment to what you just said, and that is, the human trafficking aspect is a very, very, as you know, fast-growing problem in many communities. It's growing extraordinarily fast because so many people have figured out that it's a way to make money over and over and over again versus just a one instance thing. So the more you can do to standardize things and to be aware and to get people to follow the rules and to understand what's going on like that in the community, the more that not only we're protected, but also the other people who have a much smaller voice than we do are protected. So I thank you for that.
You're welcome. Just a couple of questions. So, I know we can, we have, they have to have permits, of course, in zoning, and we can establish where to put them in the city. How about the number? Do we have the ability to control the number of establishments in the city?
We didn't do it in the zoning update. We talked about it. There'll be some challenges to doing that. In talking with city attorney's office, it's possible, but it'll be challenging. And you put some distance requirements, those kind of things, but actually doing an outright number will...
But it'd have to fit within our general plan anyway.
It would have to.
Okay. And as far as the adult ordinances on entertainment, adult entertainment, is that something that we need to look at, or is that pretty, I mean, it doesn't affect, not affected by the law because that wasn't changed? So I just want to make sure, we're trying to get ahead of it, instead of, you know, being reactive, a little bit more proactive. So if you're comfortable with where we are in that, or if you have a current one, then I'm happy with that.
Yeah, we were comfortable.
No, that was what I was asking. And that's all I have. Any other questions, discussion? Okay. Is this, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to weigh the first full reading and approve by title only an ordinance of the city of Beaumont approving amendments to the city of Beaumont Municipal Code pertaining to the regulation of massage establishments, amending Title V, Chapter 5.44.
I just want to clarify, Nicole, did we open and close the public hearing on this? We didn't, okay.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Lara.
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Mayor Bertem Santos.
Yes.
Mayor Martinez.
Yes. Okay, and with that, moving to action items. Number seven, the approval by the Community Facilities District, number 2016-4, Four Seasons, the issuance of its special tax bond, Series 2019.
Thank you, Mayor, council. And we do have our consulting team who is going to present this CFD funding mechanism. So again, this is pertaining to CFD 2016-4, which is the last section that we have of the Four Seasons project. If you remember, Four Seasons is the Series Sevens IAs from CFD 93-1, and pursuant to city council's decision to stop perpetuating 93-1 and to form independent CFDs starting back in 2016 as a new policy and to craft them specifically to the areas we're looking at. This was one of the first ones that y'all had prepared. So, as you can see, this was formed in 2017. So this is a follow-on process of providing for funding, should you guys agree to do that. So, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Michael Bush to take you through the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Your financing team is here. Similar to prior presentations, I'm going to be joined through this presentation by Mr. Forbath and Mr. Tom Jacob, and Heidi serves as our designated hitter in case you have any specific questions about the development. So similar to prior presentations, what we've tended to do, as you're aware, is kind of keep them consistent with the information that you've been asking for us from prior transactions. So we're going to go through a financial overview. I will cover that. SEC compliance and other legal items will be covered by Brian Forbath, and Mr. Tom Jacob will cover the financing details as we go through the presentation. So with that, I'm going to jump right into the overview and kind of picking up where Mr. Parton had left off. As you're aware, this transaction is for Four Seasons. This is the Cahob's development of 2016-4, the last development remaining in the project. This specific area is bounded by Breckenridge Avenue, the south, Eagles Nest Drive to the north, and Highland Springs Avenue to the east, and it's about 350, so units, I think it's 346 to be exact. Very large community, as you're aware, 1,857 units, beautiful place. I still remember going there for many meetings and seeing how beautiful it was. It's actually one of the favorite developments I've actually been through anywhere. It's beautiful. They've done a good job of keeping it well-maintained as well. This form, CFD was formed in 2017. As you can see, we're getting to the end of the CFD obligations, so to speak, that the council has agreed to form. I think we may have one left, or something like, there's a 2019, it may come down the road, but this is one of the final ones that's left from the new money issues that we'll have. I think that might be good news for some of you up there that have pushed for that to happen. It's now coming to fruition. As of September 2001, this is the date of the appraisal. The appraisal information is in the documents that you are reviewing tonight as part of this transaction. You can see the level of development at the, for this specific CFD within the development itself. Over 300 units have been completed, 12 are owned by the developer, and 2,200 construction. All the permits have been pulled. So, at the time that we are likely getting closer to closing the bond transaction, we'll have more sales completed. I think as of last October 1st, I think there's been an extra four more that have sold. So from 312, we're at 316, and those are coming from the developer-owned parcels. So it's good news. You're one of the few agencies that when you do issue CFDs, you issue them at fully built out, basically at full reimbursement. Most of them have these lean-to-value ratios of, you know, three or four to one. While that may be in most of goals and policies throughout Southern California, you guys have a process of making sure the development's fully built. You know, no issues, most of it conveyed on the tax roll. It's a unique practice to Beaumont, but it's something you've done very well in the last several years. Little bit more about the financing. As approved at the formation, this is a not-to-exceed amount of $5 million. We are proposing a not-to-exceed part- We are proposing a not-to-exceed par amount of four million two hundred and eighty-five thousand. Obviously, this is subject to market conditions, whether it'll be premium or discount bonds included, but we will not go beyond the five million dollar formation, not-to-exceed par amount. Authorized facilities, no fees. Another request to the council is going forward that the financing be used solely for public infrastructure. In this case, it's sewer system, bridge, and road improvements related to the development. A little bit about the statistics. As you can see, I want to focus a little bit on what's changed over the last couple of years. You can see effective tax rate is getting lower as we've removed the escalators. This one also has the escalator removed. Tax rate is one point seven nine, and consistent with the council's also desire, we've continued to put fees as an important element to us being able to go forward. I'm happy to report that Mr. Jacob, serving as underwriter in this transaction, is working at fees that, on average, look below those of the past, even when we had Piper here. So, the RFP process that Mr. Parton and I went through has produced good results, both in terms of their ability to execute the transaction, but also to keep the fees down from below where they've been historically. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Forbath, and he'll walk you through the legal provisions.
Good evening, Mayor Martinez, Councilmembers Brian Forbath, Mr. John Lealca. Thank you for having us here this evening. So, as we've done in the past, we prepared the offering documents, the preliminary official statement for the bonds in conformance with the cease-and-desist order that the city has entered into. In connection with that, the city adopted very robust disclosure policies and practices that have been followed in putting together the official statement, presenting it to you this evening, including having a formal due diligence session with developer representatives, the city, myself, and other team members in the room, where we actually did a page-turn flip through the official statement to make sure that all the information was true and accurate in all material respects, that there's no omissions of any material facts necessary therein to make the statements not misleading or untrue. So, we did that process, and that document is there in front of you this evening. The items for you to approve this evening are, it's a resolution of the C F D, authorizing the issuance of the two thousand and nineteen bonds in an amount not to exceed five million dollars. The bond resolution approves various documents consistent with other transactions that we've done. There's a bond purchase agreement, a continuing disclosure agreement, preliminary official statement for the bonds, bond indenture, and then hires the various finance team members. And then it sets forth the requirements underneath state law that you have good faith estimates of what the bond transaction costs entail. So, that's attached as part of the staff report for you all this evening as well. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Jacobs.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Portem, council members. I'm Jacob from Stiefel, the proposed underwriter on the transaction. So, moving on to the financing details, the following slide, this has sources and uses. The expected, these are based on current market conditions, and the proposed debt service also based on current market conditions. Right now, we're expecting four million two hundred and eighty-five thousand with level payments, level principal payments, principal and interest payments over a thirty-year period. This is non-escalating, both in the special tax and the debt service as well. We're expecting roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in principal and interest payments every single year. This nets about four point one million dollars in project fund monies, a debt service reserve fund, it's cash-funded with bond proceeds, of roughly two hundred and forty-six thousand in the event there are any delinquencies, and cost of issuance of roughly two hundred and sixteen thousand, which includes the fees paid to the various consultants, as well as the underwriting discount, which I'll give the detail on the following page. So, as Mr. Bush mentioned, there's a trend of lower fees with each issuance, very similar, very much in line with the Fairway Canyon and the recent Sundance special tax bonds, a little bit lower, as you can see. I don't think there's anything else on here. We have a breakout of the cost of issuance fund, as Mike mentioned, very similar to past transactions, and only the underwriters' discount will be based on a percentage of the bonds. Everything else is going to be fixed out. So, those are the final costs there. Now, we have the tentative schedule. So, assuming the financing is approved this evening, we intend to make the offering document available to investors this Thursday, price the bonds the following week, and settle or close the bonds the first week of November. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on the market, or the rest of the team is happy to answer any questions on anything else. Thank you.
Is that it for the presentation? Okay, so do we have public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, so no public comment for item number seven. So, open it up for discussion from council or questions. I'm good with me, I got mine answered. You want to start?
I can go last if someone else wants to.
Okay, you're good. You're okay for now?
Hope it's a good Thursday.
So, I have questions on the financing overview. I don't know who would do that, probably Mike or... So, we approved a not-to-exceed par amount of five million, and we're now approving or expecting a par, not-to-exceed par amount of four point two million. These homes have already been paying on their Melrose fees, correct? So, they're paying based on the five million?
No, they're, so, the four point two million is like a revenue constraint based on what they're paying? That's how we get to the par amount for the bonds. The five million was what you said at formation that they could not exceed.
Okay.
So, even if we could get a lot of premium, we couldn't go above the five million?
Okay.
So, the, I just want to set expectations for the homeowners there. Melrose fees or annual payments are probably going to stay about the same?
No, the annual payment should decrease approximately ten percent.
Okay, that's what I was wanting, okay. And then, seven eighty-seven is the annual tax for the life of the bond? Wow, okay.
It's amazing when you cut out that escalator.
But I have to cut out my kids to move over there, right?
You have to be fifty-five, and you have to cut out your kids, right?
I've got the age there. And then the estimated tax rate of one point seven nine, is that, that's total with all the other taxes too? That's not just, that's not just the share of this, obviously, at seven hundred and eighty-seven a year?
Yeah, that's the average inclusive of all of the other overlapping taxes, including the city's public safety and maintenance tax.
And our goal is two, right? Two point oh one?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, right.
Yeah, okay. I think that was all my, and then you were indicating that the cost of issuance is trending down.
Yeah, so when we sent out the RFPs specifically, I want to point out this slide right here, what you'll see is that underwriters' discount. That's really where most of the savings, traditionally, your financing team has kept the fees the same for every transaction. We've not raised them since the original deals, where the work is a little bit more direct, more, and I don't want to say simple, but less intense. We've modified the fees. So, for example, when there hasn't been acquisition agreements and so forth, then straddling fees will come down a little bit. But in this case specifically, I wanted to point out that the RFP, the process for underwriters, is really where it's been. I would, if I had a guess at where this would have been under prior financing teams, easily would have been double if it was the ninety-three dash one team than what is being paid here. And I think even with Piper, it probably would have been another twenty-five grand, would be my guess.
So, one last question, a comment that you made at the start of your presentation about we're nearing the end. But that, we're not nearing the end of entitlement homes under development agreements that will require C F D financing in the future, correct?
I'm aware of, I think, only one, and I could be wrong, that may have a C F D coming. That's the two thousand and nineteen series.
But you're not talking about ten years from now?
Oh, no, 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 I'm just talking about those that I'm aware of. Right, right.
Okay.
Because we've been here quite a bit.
But those seven thousand homes that are entitled are all under development agreements that still require the city to find some kind of Melrose financing for them.
Right, right. I apologize, I meant those that are formed and...
Okay, I just wanted to clear that up too, just to make sure. Okay, that was all I had, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll just, you know, echo you on the underwriting. When you presented before, though, I calculated there's a sixty thousand five hundred, the fee. Now, it dropped to fifty-one thousand, which is really appreciate that. And then there's no escalation in there, no, nothing in there. The only thing is, you know, on my question is the, you know, on the services, you put it seven hundred and eighty-seven, but on the original is seven oh five. On that, I don't know where the eighty dollars came from.
I think this is an old number on here.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a correction recently made. So, I think your staff report or the documents have the higher number, that's the correct number.
Okay. That's the real number.
Right, that's correct.
Very good. And then I didn't see any, you know, amortization schedule on this, not like before you got the amortization. We fully amortized this for thirty years?
Yes, there it is. We don't have the chart, but it's level debt service all the way across. You can see the blue chart.
Yeah, okay, very good. That's all I have, thank you.
Then, seeing no other comment or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So, this isn't all those different special, okay. So, I move to waive the full reading and adopt by title only a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beaumont acting as the legislative body of the City of Beaumont Community Facilities District, number twenty sixteen dash four, authorizing the issuance of its two thousand and nineteen special tax bonds in aggregate principal amount not to exceed five million, and approving certain documents and taking certain other actions in connection therewith.
I'll second.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Laura.
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Santos.
Yes.
Yes. And with that, we're moving to item number eight, the award of contract.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, designated hitter. Award of contract to Embra Electric, Inc. for citywide electrical services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item you have before you is to award a contract to Embra Electric Incorporated. They are a local company here in Beaumont for citywide electrical services. Staff published an invitation to solicit bids on the city's website, as well as in Dodge Construction Central, which is a trade journal. We only received one bid. The requirements included a current state-of-California contractor, state licensing board, and the successful bidder is required to do routine electrical maintenance throughout the city during normal business hours. And there's a list of city facilities in your staff report. There, it also includes the lift stations, the wastewater treatment plant lift stations, as well as all the buildings that the city owns. In addition to the routine maintenance, the bidder is required to respond within one hour for emergency situations, and we specifically wrote this in there in case something happened at the police department. They are a twenty-four-seven operation, and the contractor would be required to be on-call and available twenty-four-seven. As I mentioned, we only received one bid. The recommendation is to award a public works repair and maintenance agreement for citywide electrical services to Embra Electric for a period not to exceed three years, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. The city attorney did draft this particular agreement specifically for this bid, and it's a hybrid of a public works contract and a maintenance services agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, so open it up for questions or discussion from council. Anybody here? Ms. Carroll?
You have any thoughts on why we only got one response on the grid? Do you think it's because of the day, how we work during the day?
I believe it's because of the commitment. It truly is a huge commitment on the contractor's part to be available within a one-hour response time for an emergency situation, twenty-four hours a day.
The term on this?
Three years.
Three years, okay. Oh, she answered that. She answered that? They need to be able to repair or work on the wastewater treatment plant? Is that something that's within their specialty or...?
There are certain areas, and Christine can chime in. There are certain areas on the treatment plant that you're not going to want this particular contractor to do. They're specialty areas, which would be contracted out with other electricians.
So, much of the electrical is standard electrical at a lift station or the wastewater treatment plant, where it interfaces is with our P L C or our SCADA system. And in that, we will probably be bringing back to you with the P L C contract once we get all of our P L Cs done in the lift station. Another contract very similar to this that awards that to one. Those two individuals, both contractors, will need to work together. The P L C controls all of the electrical, but an electrician has to do the electrical portion of it. But this will, we have a lot of electrical issues with our lift stations right now. This is a huge component to help our guys be able to move forward without hitting up against a threshold.
All right, thank you. And have we had contracts with them before? It's our first contract or...?
I don't believe that we, in my experience, have ever entered into a maintenance contract for electrical services. We have done business with Embra when we individually bid out projects specifically for facility, for facilities. We send it out to three or four contractors, and Embra is usually the lowest. They've consistently come in lower than most.
Okay, and I just asked in case if we did, we would have known if there was any problems or situations we had.
They're doing a lot of our wastewater work right now for us.
And unfortunately, we're bumping up against that threshold almost every year because we have so much electrical components. And so, again, this allows us not to have to skip and jump around with an electrician, which is important within our systems. But they've done a good job for us in the past.
And any relations to Beaumont Electric?
Not that I know of.
Thank you. Ms. Carroll?
So, if this is for three years, and if I look at this list here of the facilities that are included in it, if we did something like add a restroom to one of these parks, would they not have to maintain it? Or is it really just limited to what's listed here that they would have to do the work on? Did I not say that clearly? Do you want me to say it again? Okay, for instance, you got here Stewart Park restroom in Pavilion Building, Sports Park restroom in Concession Building. So, I'm trying to figure out, over the three years, if we ever added a restroom to another facility and it wasn't listed here, would they not have to work on it because it wasn't here?
No, this is just a, it's not...
Sort of a sample? Okay, thank you.
It's just to give the respondents the information, the magnitude of...
Kind of a sphere of, yeah, okay.
What this would not include is if we went out to brand-new construction, like the wastewater treatment plant or another big building-type construction, Westside Fire Station. They will not be the preferred contractors on that. They'll be a sub on. So, this is really for maintenance and operations of any of our existing facilities citywide.
Okay, but if we added a building in three years, they would do the maintenance on that building? Okay, thank you. That's the clarification I wanted. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't so discreet that we had to live by this. All right.
Well, in two items, you're going to have the ring of our restroom.
Okay. It was kind of where I was headed with it, so, thank you.
Great, and if we all entertain a motion, if we have no further discussion?
May I move that we award a public works repair and maintenance agreement for the citywide electrical services to Embra Electric, Inc. for a period not to exceed three years and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the City of Beaumont.
I'll second. Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Laura.
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Santos.
Yes.
Yes. With that, item number nine, award a contract to Morin Associates, Inc. to perform a comprehensive operations analysis of the transit services in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty cents.
Thank you, Mayor. This item before you is another award of a contract to Morin Associates. This particular contract award is very exciting. This, this particular contract award is very exciting to staff. It does set a lot of work for us ahead, but it is, it is going to be the pathway for the next five to ten years, once the study is completed. We did receive three bids. Moran Associates was the lowest bid. We did interview the two lowest respondents, TMD, which is Transportation Management and Design. They were actually the firm that did the previous COA back in two thousand thirteen, fourteen with the city of Banning. After conducting interviews with, with the two firms, it was very apparent that Moran Associates was the lowest and the most qualified to perform the COA for us. This project was included in the annual short-range transit plan that you all adopted back in May of this year. It was also approved by Riverside County Transportation Commission, so the funding is coming directly from the state for this project. However, it is important to note that this is part of our operations. It is not a capital project. Therefore, the one hundred and twenty-one thousand and some change, we are going to work hard to make that ten percent fair box because that is part of the operations. It is not on the capital side of transit. Recommendation is to award a contract to Moran Associates in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty cents, and authorize the mayor to execute the professional services agreement with Moran Associates. And Moran Associates did drive from Santa Clarita this evening. Erin is here representing the firm. If you do have any questions, she did make quite a long drive.
Thank you. Do we have public comment? Okay, with that, discussion or questions from council? Mr. White?
Do we have a timeline on when this study would be completed?
Do you want to answer that, Erin?
I'll look it up so I don't have incorrect information.
We did put, in the scope, we did, we did word the scope with a sense of urgency. They plan to hit the ground running in, with onboard data collection immediately. That really does need to be done in the month of November because we'll get into December and January, and we will not get some good samples in those months from passengers. I do know that if this contract, if the contract is awarded tonight, the kickoff meeting is in two weeks. And I would say within six to nine months, we would be nearing the end of, of the study.
Mayor, I do have a question or two for a being. Just sort of your process. Elizabeth talked about your onboard data collecting.
Yes.
So is that people that work for you, is that current customers you survey? Or do you hire people locally to go in and ride the buses? How's that, how's that?
Well, I, I'm the market research manager for Moran Associates, so I will be overseeing all data collection for this effort. I will come personally. We do typically contract with a local temporary staffing firm to provide surveyors, and the specific number will depend on how much time we have to actually conduct the data collection. I will interview them all personally. I will train them, and I will oversee all data collection. This is something that we do, and have done in other communities, so we do have a lot of experience with this specifically. We will also have many opportunities for community involvement and community input into the process, including, let's see, we will have the surveys of the riders. We will have workshops and roundtables throughout the process, letting them know where we stand in, in the project, and seeking their input into how to, what kind of changes they feel need to be made.
Thank you. What's the closest city that you've worked with to us?
Well, let's see. You know, geography is not my...
Well, if none of them look familiar coming in, then it's probably not.
I'll tell you a little bit about Moran Associates. We have worked with communities for outside of California and comparable, comprehensive-sized communities.
Not after the interview, so they are national.
Yes, we have two associates right now in Michigan, and they'll be heading to Georgia tomorrow, so, yeah. But Bakersfield, we have worked with. We have worked with a lot of places within Kern County, for instance, Ventura County, Los Angeles County, San Bernardino County. So we have worked with a lot of communities in the area.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You're gonna be glad you're working here, not in Minnesota.
Absolutely.
Okay, this is just tripping forward Beaumont Transit, correct?
Correct.
We're not partnering with anybody?
No.
And this, so this will be the roadmap to set us moving forward, right?
And Mayor, just for council's reference, page three eighty-four of your packet, there's a Gantt chart. It was included in the submission by Moore, and it shows that by mid-September, so about ten months is what the projected timeframe for final work would be.
Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, and no further discussion. We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to award a contract to Moran Associates, Inc. in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty cents, and authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Moran Associates, Inc.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll? Mayor Portem Santos?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Congratulations and thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
No pun intended. Here we go.
We are honored to be chosen, and we're looking forward to working with you and your community.
Appreciate that. Okay, and moving to item number ten, the award of construction contract to TSR Construction and Inspection in an amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Project, Rangel Park Improvements Project two zero one eight dash zero zero five A, CDBG five BEA thirty-six dash eighteen, and authorize the city manager to execute change orders in the amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars for a total contract amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is for the Rangel Park Improvement Projects, what I call Phase One. This is to construct a restroom and concession facility at Rangel Park. It, it's a prefabbed, set-in-place building, and this includes removal of the current utilities and then putting the building in place, and then adding the existing, the new utilities with the sidewalk around the perimeter of the restroom. We did get seven different bids. It, it was very, very close. There was a seven hundred dollar difference between the top two bidders. Yeah, we had multiple people attend the public bid opening, including a representative from the county of Riverside that monitors all of the community block grant funding. They, there are two separate CDBG awards. We did confirm those with the county prior to the staff report. The first award is for one hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixteen cents, and the second award is for one hundred fifty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-five for a total funds available of three hundred thirty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixteen cents. This contract award is for, well under that, two hundred thirty-seven dollars, seven, two hundred thirty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars. So that even with the contingency, there is a balance of funds remaining for future improvements that we can use on the next phase, which would be a splash pad. If you recall the conceptual plan that we brought before council, council chose the direction that we should go at this park, and we will chip away at each of the improvements until the park is completed. So the recommendation from staff is to award a construction contract in an amount not to exceed two hundred thirty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars to TSR Construction and Inspection for the Rangel Park Improvements Project. Authorize the mayor to execute the public works agreement on behalf of the city, as well as authorize the city manager to approve any recommended change orders in an amount not to exceed ten percent of the contract for twenty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy. And again, the city attorney did, did approve this contract prior to publishing.
Okay, thank you. Other comment? Okay, questions, discussion from council?
I have a question here.
Okay, Ms. Lara?
I understand that the restroom building is prefabricated, but the concession stand as well?
It's all one building.
Oh, it's all one building?
Yes.
And then contractor will install the foundation with utilities stubbed out for the... And it comes delivered and then set? Okay.
We actually got this idea from the county of Riverside, another city, a local city here. And Riverside County did a similar concept, and they really encouraged us to go this route with the prefab.
Yeah, I've seen a number of parks in the county of Riverside have used the restroom buildings that are prefabricated, and it seems to be a really quick and, and easy way to go. And, and you end up with a good product at the end as well, so I'm anxious to see this one. Thank you.
Quickly, is the, you know, the start and the completion of this? Do you have some ideas?
We're hoping a hundred and twenty days, maximum.
Maximum.
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. White?
I'm good.
You good? All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to award a construction contract in the amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars to TSR Construction and Inspection for the Rangel Park Improvements Project, Project two thousand eighteen dash zero zero five A, five point BEA point three six dash one eight, and two, to authorize the mayor to execute the public works agreement on behalf of the city of Beaumont, and three, authorize the city manager to approve any recommended change orders in an amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars.
I'll second.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Santos?
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you, Ms. Gibbs. And with that, it brings us to item number eleven, the approval of a five-year purchase contract with Axon Enterprise, Inc. for TASER seven systems in an amount not to exceed seventy-eight thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. So before you, the police department's proposing a five-year purchase of twenty TASER seven electronic control device systems. This is a maintenance program that you buy into, so we'll take possession of all twenty, outfit our sworn personnel with the latest less-than-lethal tool to help de-escalate conflicts or to prevent greater use of forces. Within this, it comes with all the necessary maintenance, training, and practice munitions that will need to be proficient with the tool. This will be paid for out of the SLESA, Supplemental Law Enforcement Services account, and so there's not a direct impact to the, to the general fund. And then these payments will be made over a five-year plan. And with the current legislation, the police department takes in a hundred thousand dollars a year in the SLESA, so we anticipate there'll be ample coverage for this and the other technological programs that we brought before council. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Public comment? So Chief, you just made a point. So that amount comes to us total, or we, we get a portion of SLESA every year, and that's why we make partial payments?
So we make partial payments because Axon breaks the, the cost over five years. So they spread out the five-year payment plan, I think, as a convenience for law enforcement agencies. And then with the way that the legislator had set up SLESA, is that it's a population base, but the minimum is a hundred thousand. So as you know, we have purchased other technology, the cadets, the UAV search and rescue drone we have, and other programs out of SLESA.
So that amount's already established, and that won't change the seventy-eight thousand that we're receiving for this?
This will not change, and, and we don't anticipate any legislation changing the SLESA.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from council? We're all good? Okay. Then I will move that we approve a five-year contract with Axon Enterprises, Inc. in the amount not to exceed seventy-eight thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents, and is provided in quote Q dash two ones, two one two two zero four dash four three five nine one dot nine one three TC.
I'll second. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Santos?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Moving to item number twelve, an interim urgency ordinance for a temporary moratorium prohibiting public storage facilities, moving and storage establishments, automobile parking facilities, including recreational vehicles, truck stops, and terminals, and building storage yards.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Portem, and council members. At the October first, two thousand nineteen city council meeting, the Community Development Director brought forward a discussion item on a potential temporary moratorium prohibiting certain uses that are not consistent with the general plan policies and goals or with the economic strategic plan goals. The city council did direct staff to bring back a forty-five-day moratorium, so that's what's before you tonight. If the forty-five-day moratorium is approved, the community development will bring forward a ten-month and fifteen-day extension at your November nineteenth meeting. We have included the strategic goals, and the previous staff report is an attachment in your staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Hey, thank you. Other comment? Okay, questions from council? Any here? Mr. Lara?
Carroll's good.
Very good.
Senator, Mr. White?
I'm fine.
Okay, with that then, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive the full reading and adopt by title only an interim emergency ordinance for the city of Beaumont enacting a temporary moratorium prohibiting public storage facilities, moving and storage establishments, automobile parking facilities, including recreational vehicles, automobile parking facilities, truck stops, and terminals, and building storage yards pursuant to government code section six five eight five eight.
I'll second.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Santos?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. With that, item number thirteen, the consideration to council December seventeen, two thousand nineteen city council meeting.
Mayor, I'd like to move to, to council the December seventeenth, two thousand nineteen city council meeting.
You don't want to discuss it?
I do not. You can if you'd like.
I'll second.
I got a second. We have no objections. Roll call, please.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes, and before we continue, was there a public comment on this item? Okay, thank you. Wow, I don't even know what just happened there.
We had a whiz-bang PowerPoint presentation.
Julio?
Yes. Okay, with that, moving to item number fourteen, city council approval of change order number nine for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade expansion in the amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-three cents.
Good evening, council. This is the change order we touched on last time that we will be bringing back to you. I'll just run through these very quickly. If you have any questions, you can either stop me, or we can answer at the tell-in. A lot happening in this change order, so I'm gonna touch on each one of them. And then I'll tell you really what the big portion of this is. So there's a small increase for the solids handling conveyor. When we deducted the solar drying beds out of the initial bid, we did not resize the solids handling conveyor, and so this is actually a resize in order to handle the solids that are coming out. Again, small change order, but it is something that is... Again, small change order, but is something that is definitely necessary. The second item is we asked for, and this was a staff-driven item, to change the electrical vault covers from painted steel to galvanized. As we're out there working out in the field and in the plant, we just don't want that chipping maintenance issue, and so the galvanized is better for the deteriorating metals that happen in a plant, as well as any of the long-term maintenance of having to go back and always repaint those. The third one is an item that was related to, remember, we actually designed this facility with no plans in the initial, and so this was just a conflict that we found under the ground. We had to do some potholing. Staff tried to help in this. We actually tried to use the actor trucks to do some potholing. It was just a bit deeper, and so we ended up having to pay the contractor a small amount. And then the fourth item is the big one. The majority of this, so there was some small changes that staff asked us to do related to our connection to the brine line. They need to see sampling points at both the plant, as well as the connection piece into the inland Empire Brine Line. The gas company actually rerouted their line coming into the plant, and so we had some small costs associated with that. And then the big one is the addition of the potable line. The way that it was initially designed was an eight-inch line coming into the plant. That eight-inch line was going to be the fire loop, as well as the potable water source. And we got to looking at the cost of paying the eight-inch meter monthly fee. We backed off of that and said, what are our options? And so what staff came up with, with the design engineer and working with the Mont Cherry Valley, is to do a double-loop system. So we'll have the eight-inch fire line, we pay a flat monthly fee on the eight-inch fire line, and then we added the four-inch potable line. We will actually put a two-inch meter on that. The difference between the eight-inch fire line, the two-inch meter, and an eight-inch meter is roughly about $1,000 savings per month. You can see where that will pay for the cost of itself pretty quickly. And so the majority of your costs within this change order is associated with that, but we believe we'll make that cost back fairly quickly. Happy to answer any questions. Total change order is roughly about $138,000. That's shown in your project accounting. We actually accounted for it last week when we brought you change order 10. We're still well within our change order amount of $1 million, and so we recommend moving forward with this change order.
All right, thank you. Public comment?
Yes, sir.
All right, discussion from council? Here, Mr. Lara?
I'm okay.
Santos, Mr. Carroll, Mr. White. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve change order number nine for the wastewater treatment plant expansion renovation project in the amount not to exceed $138,531.73.
I'll second.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Santos?
Yes.
Yes. With that, item number 15, the approval of the city attorney invoices for the month of September 2019, proven invoice in the amount of $110,707.4.
And given that this item affects my law firm, I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you, Ms. Pink. And we have a staff report needed, questions or a motion? Want to report?
Well, I have a quick question. Not a quick question, probably, but...
All right.
Quick question, long answer, probably. So this is a little bit higher, or significantly higher than our average, so as much as you can, can you speak to that?
Sure. You have $57,000 of this, which is third-party litigation, so that means $53,000 is other litigation you're handling, plus your retainer, and there's about $14,000 over retainer on that. So what we're looking at on your standard monthly legal charges are consistent and within what you had budgeted. But again, you got $57,000, which is third-party claim, and a portion of that will come back to you as reimbursements through WR cog.
And just for definition, third-party claim means?
Those are the pieces of litigation that we're pursuing with regard to the actors that were involved in the issues that happened under prior administration that led to the TUMF issues, the WR cog, the FBI investigations, the SEC investigations, and the SEO investigations. A series of things.
Because we're working with WR cog on those?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other further clarification?
We're good.
We're good.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the invoices in the amount of $110,707.4.
I'll second that.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Santos?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Move to the chair. All right. All right, so that brings us to item number 16, the legislative updates and discussion. Welcome, Mr. Worsinski. We're looking forward to your very brief presentation. What do you got for us?
Works with me. So, Mayor and council, before you tonight is the Towns and Public Affairs report for September and going into October. You can see on here the details of what the governor has signed and vetoed, so I won't really go into that too much. There's a whole homeless package, so a slew of bills that was signed for homeless concerns that occur within the state of California. There are some housing bills of note. I think 1251 was pulled, and then there's a two-year bill, and then I think everyone's aware that there's that rent cap bill that had passed, which also has tenant eviction protections. The Housing Mitigation Fee Act turned into a two-year bill. Housing Crisis Act, which is Senate Bill 330, was passed and signed. Housing Accountability Act is a two-year bill, and then the elections and local redistricting passed and was signed as well. The ones that aren't on here, because he was still working on them after Thursday night when we got this, is EB 1184 was vetoed by Governor Newsom, and then Senate Bill 5 passed the legislature but was vetoed. And then last of note, Senate Bill 266 on public employee retirement system benefit adjustments is now a two-year bill. And your matrix of all the other bills that we're tracking is provided, and I can answer any questions. Thank you.
And, Ms. Worsinski, can you just comment on the League of Cities' position on SB 5? It came up. Are you aware of that? Or maybe I just got the memo?
I didn't see what their position was on that one.
That was the one, hopefully I got the right number. That's the one that they opposed, the governor's veto.
Yes, that was the Affordable Housing Community Development Investment Program. So, yeah, I think that was one of the ones that we requested the veto on. I think the League of Cities was opposed to it, and then obviously the governor was opposed to it, so that'll probably be reworked and reintroduced next legislative session, along with a significant portion of other housing bills.
Okay. Any other questions from Ms. Worsinski? Mr. White, good? Thank you for your time. All right, that brings us to council reports. Do we have any volunteers? If we're not, we can handle this. Okay, Ms. Laura?
I attended the WR cog executive committee meeting. One of the, I guess, disappointing things that came out of there was the SCAG has been working with the state of California as member agencies to identify regional, or their goals for an allocation process for the region. This came back to us, Mr. Parton represented that to us in regards to option one, or option two, or option three. At that time, the city's preference was option two, and so unfortunately, SCAG has prepared an option four, which actually increases the number. Option two for us was 2,718 units. These are affordable housing units.
Correct.
And with under option four, the number, our target would be 6,216, which is quite a bit higher.
Just a bit.
Well, of course, it's better than what Cala Mesa has, which, under option two, was 514. Under option four is 4,349, which makes it a little difficult when they issue about 20 permits a year. So it's unfortunate, and the math or the behind the options is something I couldn't, I don't grasp or understand, and it doesn't take a lot of things, such as the economy, into consideration that I could see, but I did want to make you aware of that. And that's, unfortunately, I had to report, with the exception of, did any, were any of you able to go out and see the steam engine?
Oh, no, I didn't.
I did saw it.
Did you?
Yeah.
Good. We'll hear it in your...
I heard it was quite the event. Quite a few people, yeah.
There were a lot of people, yeah.
That's all I have, man.
All right, thank you, Ms. Laura. Carroll?
Sure. I did not see, what was it, Big Ben? What was it called?
Big Ben, yeah.
Anyway, I didn't see it, but I did see everybody lined up along the roads, all the way up Oak Valley Parkway, all the way down by Patsy's Restaurant in Banning. I was shocked by how many people were actually lined up to see it. A lot of people with tripods and cameras, and I had an appointment at 9:30 out in Palm Springs that I had to go to, so the whole way I drove out there, I kept looking at the railroad tracks, hoping I'd be the first in Beaumont to see it. But unfortunately, I missed it, so... But I did hear it was a really colorful event, and that it was not to be missed, but I did. I enjoyed the Banning State of the City meeting, and got to meet and see a lot of the Banning staff that I hadn't had an opportunity to hear from before. It was a nice luncheon, and it was a very enjoyable meeting, and the staff seems to be bonding really good. They've had a lot of changes, so I'm really looking forward to seeing some of the things that they had predicted to be put in place. I, of course, like everybody else, has been very concerned about the city of Cali Mesa. I did a bit of a reach-out and for clothing and things like that, and understand that it was very well taken care of by donations and the Red Cross, and now they're at the stage where they're starting to set up structures for monetary donations for people that are in need, so I'm going to continue to look into that. I did attend a couple of RTA meetings. One of them was to put in place a elected official to move people up the ladder to replace losing chairman Randon Lane when he went to Washington. And then I went to the RTA rodeo, which, if you don't know what the rodeo is, I'll give you a snapshot. The buses all over the world, they compete with the bus drivers on how quickly and how well they can get around an obstacle course, and how fast they can do it, and they take out tape measures and measure stopping distance and do all these things, and I didn't realize it was an international thing. This was not the international event, but it was, I don't know, pre-qualifier to set the times for what our local RTA drivers can do. As part of it, they always have elected officials who are willing to sign up and drive a 40-foot bus. I have managed to escape that every year until this year, and finally got razzed into doing it, and I decided before I chickened out, I'd be the first one to drive since I've never been behind a bus before. So apparently, I did a lot better than Mayor Welch. So I didn't really want to bring that up, but somebody told me I had to, so...
Way to represent...
I only knocked over one barrel, and I didn't kill any of the pedestrians that I was supposed to stop for, so I did pretty well with it, and I've never practiced before, and next year, I'm really gonna...
All right.
I'm really gonna knock it out.
Is this a preview to you looking to Elizabeth for a job?
Although Elizabeth said, I heard you did well. It was actually, it was a lot of fun. It really was. And Kyle was there, and, you know, he testifies that I, right, that I didn't knock over any buses or endanger any people. Yep.
Please say you put it on YouTube. Did you put it on YouTube? Did you get it?
I did not.
I give you one. Okay, well...
Next year, we'll really, we'll really set Beaumont as the number one.
All right. High standards.
Mr. Santos?
Oh. Did the, you know, last October 2nd, we did the California Clean Air Day, and we did, planted a tree, a beautiful tree, I mean, it's magnolia, magnolia tree, and on the Fallen Heroes Park. I'm, I was there, and our mayor, Julio Martinez, I didn't make it, so I did the, you know, presentations in there with the council, Nancy Carroll, and we had a great time in there. And of course, our stuff is all over there, and there's a big crowd in there, so, right? So on my side, that's the report. And then this morning, I just accidentally, you know, I live in Turniman Hills, and I saw, you know, Oak Valley Parkway, I mean, it's incredible. It's amazing. A lot of cars, lot of people on the Oak Valley Parkway, and I saw the, I'll rewrite it in here, the Big Boy Train, Steamer 4014, that's the name, and, you know, it's beautiful. I mean, you could Google that, and it's amazing, I mean, this train. So I was really amazed on that. People up to the, you know, on my side, up to the freeway, they stopped by, stopped on the freeway just to see this train, because you could see it on the freeway, also the Oak Valley Parkway. And other than that, that's the report I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. Mr. White?
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you. And then for my report, basically, let's see, I attended the mayor's meeting last Thursday, and we had a update from Southern California Edison on the PSPS procedures for our area. I also attended the State of the City from Banning. It was well-attended and well-done, and they are going through a lot of hiring and a lot of new employees, so I look forward to working with them further in the future. RCA, we talked about our social media policy, and we did unadopt a policy for the record, and our species of the month was the blue heron. I don't know, did I do that last week? No? All right, well, it's a blue heron, that's what it is. And I just wanted to...
Not the red heron?
No, it's gotta be the blue one. And on a serious note, I do want to thank city staff. We are, were in elevated alert service status during the time of the fires, and I was in constant contact with Mr. Parton. I just wanted to thank the PD and the animal control that were present to help what we could, and it's such a devastating thing for our close neighbors, so I want to thank staff and all those that were contributing to that. All right, and with that...
I feel an elevated city joke coming, and the city manager's...
Oh, we're gonna find...
He's just...
Well, I won't tell you, well, anyway. The State of the City, Banning, made a reference to the elevated Beaumont status in reference to their cannabis thing, but anyway. EDC update, Mr. Worsinski?
That topic is not in my report. The other note on the Big Boy Train is that thing was super loud in terms of its horn, so if we receive some complaint calls on Union Pacific not adhering to our silent crossing policy, I think we're going to have to give them a free pass on that one, because we may actually get some of those. So the Economic Development Committee had a meeting, what was it, last week, very well-attended. We discussed the current updates of different projects that are going on, so I was able to explain to the committee members and the members of the public all the fun updates that Christine has provided on the Portero interchange, as well as the wastewater treatment plant. Not sure there is excitement... Not sure they're as excited as we are in terms of those projects, but needless to say, they're very important for the economic success of the city. We also had attendance of about fourteen high school students who are all vying for that one spot from the Beaumont Unified School District vacancy that we have. So myself and Dr. Brown at the school district administration have kind of come up with a way to see who's interested, have them participate, and then they'll ultimately make a decision on who should be recommended for the appointment to that. And then lastly, we discussed the business of the month program, and that was probably a twenty-minute discussion in which the committee threw out different ideas. Nothing solid so far, but in the extensive research that staff has done on the topic, we found some very successful programs throughout the country. My favorite one was, where was it? Lakeland, Florida. But none of the ones I found that are successful are ran by the city itself. Most are being run by chambers of commerce, and they have a very extensive process to go through. So we're going to be expanding on that and then discussing it. Unfortunately, Betty Rader was not able to attend from the chamber, so we'll have to get her feelings on that at the next meeting, and then we'll report back to council. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, city treasurer.
I have a short fifteen-minute PowerPoint presentation. Oh, see, I got his attention. I'd like to say something you don't realize, you know, I'm newer to the area than a lot, but how close the Calamasa area is. One of the employees over at Tuckwit, our beverage woman who services us, her whole house was burned. Her and her husband are completely out, and we were able to collect just on Saturday eighteen hundred dollars that we gave them Saturday, so they have something in their pocket. But, you know, those people are working around us, so it's a shame. Okay, my report. We met on Monday, and we reviewed as a committee, the Finance and Audit Committee, the direction we had received from the council regarding some things that we, as a committee, thought we could contribute from skills that we have. And the initial thing that had been done is they were prioritized. There were six items, and they were prioritized. We are going to work on the first four, which are working on the CFE program, awareness program. We're going to work on RFP process, evaluate investments and financial policies, see if we can make some recommendations there. And we are going to evaluate security of the city telecommunications and security. There are the four that we have three subcommittees for, and the other will be a whole committee, because we'll get a presentation from our IT Edgar, right? We'll do that, and we will be evaluating that. The other two, we're going to put on hold, because we need to bite off an amount we can take. There's only like about seven people on the council, and it would also put a tremendous burden on Mr. Parton and the rest of the staff, because we would need some background from them, so that's where we are in that process.
All right, thank you, sir. Questions? Okay, city clerk.
Thank you. The Register of Voters unveiled in a meeting last week the new computerized voting system that we will probably have at least one of in our polling places come the next election. It's really good, and I think it will help speed up the voting process in terms of counting votes and make it more accurate. So I was pleased to see that. It's going to probably require a lot of people at the polling place to help when it first comes out, but it should be fairly easy to do once they get the hang of it. The public records report for the month of September. Total number of requests, fifty-two. Number completed request, fifty. Staff time allocated, twenty-six point five hours. That's all I have.
City attorney report?
Nothing this evening.
City manager report?
Oh, goodness. Well, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to present to council tonight. I could brag about the Broncos winning yet another game, and the fourth-best team, so I'm not going to go there. I could brag about the Astros looking like the best team in baseball right now, but I'm not going to talk about that. I have something else to really brag about. And Mr. Rico is here in the audience, Pedro. He is our new chief building official. Comes to us from the city of Ontario, where he built that city with his bare hands. And he's come here to build this city for us, so welcome aboard. Thank you. I did tell him he had twenty-five minutes to make a speech, so we're ready. Oh, you're gonna do that next week? Is that next week?
You hear next week?
Okay.
No PowerPoint?
No PowerPoint on fifteen days.
Next Tuesday at six thirty.
You can build something.
He does them in red. They're all in red.
Is that the December seventeenth meeting we will have?
So he can have all the time he wants. He is unfettered, and it's gonna be amazing. I know, I know. So, Mr. Peatney said he wouldn't come back more than once or twice. And then I've heard the new election system is called the Blue Heron Election System. It's because it's allegedly, it's allegedly there, but nobody sees it, and nobody knows how it works, so we'll see how it works. That does conclude the city manager's report for you this evening.
Wow. Again, welcome aboard here, and thank you for coming and sitting through our whole meeting. You'll be used to that. So for future agenda items, the only thing I want to mention is, for me, is that I spoke to Mr. Swoda. That was the young gentleman that spoke about the parks. And I think that we probably should have some discussion on that at some point in the future. I kind of want to wait until after our budget workshop, though, to kind of see what our priorities are as council. But I think at some point, we probably should need to talk about whether we want to form some sort of an ad hoc committee or citizens group or something like that at some point, if no one has any objections to that.
Would it be beneficial for us to have estimates of what that potential could be for the budget workshop? Or is that too...
Well, I think since the budget workshop is more of a priority, I want to make sure that we, we want an agreement with the priority of looking further into it. I guess we could, if Mr. Parton wants to put together just some numbers that might... But I was looking more of, so we don't go into discussion on that topic itself at the budget meeting, rather more of a priority on whether it's something that we want to proceed, and then see if we want to start coming up with other groups of that, so...
I think on the small side, you're probably looking at one hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand? All the way up to a million?
Yeah, and there's, and there's a lot of options.
That's a big range.
It could be a whole new one. It could be just a retro of what's there. I mean, that's something we can talk about in the future, so I didn't want to put that in front of the budget meeting. I want to do that first, and then see if, you know, we want to go further with that. So I told him I would mention that and bring that back in the future, near future, hopefully.
He wants to use it for roller derby items.
Do we have any other future agenda items? If not, then we will adjourn at seven thirty-nine. It's a steep hour, buddy.